Good evening. It is Monday, June 17, 6:30 PM. And we have a quorum. We're going to call this workshop session the Lewisville City Council to Order. And first up on the agenda is discussion of consent and regular agenda items. So council, if you would go ahead and take a look at your packets, if you haven't already. First up will be C1. I've got invocation with Mayor Pro Tem Meredith and pledge to flags with Councilman Troyer just hands it up. C1, Lewisville Citizens University graduation. C2, Spirit of Lewisville Award Honors. These were two great picks, by the way. I really, really thought that was well done. Item 3, Council Canines. Bob, or did you get a new dog? No?
No.
Okay.
I made sure my wife wasn't with me.
Fair.
Oh, I need to call her.
D1, Public Hearing. Ordinance amending Article 7. This is on massage therapy. D2, Public Hearing. This one is special use permits for smoking establishments in certain zoning. D3, Public Hearing. Special use permit for bar and food truck park. I'm going to be abstaining from this one. Item F4, approval of minutes. Any comments on minutes? Item F5, billing and collection between us and Denton County. Six, Grand Center Carol Agreement. Design services for renovation to the Grand Theater.
What's the timeline on that?
Do we have a timeline?
I'm over here, on the backside. So the design work would start as quickly as we can execute a contract. They say it's going to be about 90 to 120 days to complete that. I'm hoping to push them all the best here. Sometime next budget year, we would have those plans in there.
Seven, Capital Associates Shoreline Erosion Phase 1. Item 8, MOU for AARP Community Challenge Grant. Really exciting. Thanks for finding that one. Item 9, change order to Core Construction for the fire tower.
Mayor, I have a small presentation just to talk through it with you guys about what's going on here. So on this one, just reminding you guys, we are currently in construction on our fire training buildings. And we are here before you today because we are needing to add additional funding towards our contingency. We spent all of our contingency because of an unforeseen situation. So if you can go to the next slide. This is our unforeseen situation. Now, we are not building a dive tank there for our firefighters to learn how to dive. But in fact, when we started building the foundation, we had to remove some of the earth. It started filling with groundwater. Now, we had geotechnical testing done, and so they would drill beforehand. We knew there was some level of water in there, but this was coming from off the site in an area that would not be foreseen to test. The reality is with groundwater, it goes to the easiest path of movement. And so when you remove that soil there, we believe there is an opportunity, we know there's an opportunity water line nearby, and we believe that there was groundwater running alongside that pipe. This released some of the pressure, and it flooded into this area. We started off looking at, is there any, should we move this location? Is there any other place that we could put it on the site? But to do so would have cost more than what it costs to remediate this issue. To remediate this issue, basically, we had to de-water the site. So if you can go to the next slide. We put pumps out there, and for many days, we pumped water out. And then we had to bring in a different type of fill, basically, concrete-based fill to go around the foundation to make sure that it was stable and ready to go forward. So next slide. That was successful. We have gone vertical. So all of the underground risk has been shed. But unfortunately, next slide. We do have, we had originally $373,380 in the owner's contingency. The water mitigation costs were at $360. That's what we paid out already. If you look down below, remaining mitigation cost projects, those are things we're still negotiating with Core because there were some other additional costs related to it. There's no other additional mitigation costs, but we're still trying to work out what those additional costs are going to be. So worst-case scenario is that $220,000. If you look at the $13,000 up there, that's really what our true change order costs were under contingency. So if we didn't have this de-watering issue, we would never have, we would have only gotten up to $13,000. So this is an unusual situation. And so to, basically, to make sure we have a little buffer for our contingency in the future, as well as to cover the rest of the mitigation costs, we are going to have to do a supplemental funding of $395,000. I have talked to both the city managers of Highland Village as well as Flower Mound. They are in support of moving forward, but because this is a very time-constrained process with construction, you need to move forward and not have things sitting around. We are going to front this funding, and then they were going to work on an interlocal agreement on the back end to get us the money on the back end. So we'll be, we're working on that currently. Shante is the project manager on that to get that done. The only other thing to tell you about this is, I think that's about it. So we're moving forward with that, and, you know, we're, I think, four months behind schedule other than that. Any questions?
Thanks. I've done a lot of stuff. I've never seen that. What originally I saw is I thought you had water in the pier holes. And again, this was a casing cost.
No, that would have been much better.
I spent $600,000 on piers with water and sand, so I'm not shocked at the price. So I understand, but I've never seen that happen.
Yeah, this was unfortunate. The good news is we have a team that's had, that they've dealt with this before. We also have Jim Progi, who used to do construction in Florida, and they have to de-water all the time. So this was not abnormal for him, at least. Abnormal for the rest of us.
So this is Jim's fault?
All just, he promises.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Appreciate the detail on what happened there. Item 10, Resolution of City Council Authorizing Grant for the Boys and Girls Club focused on food and security.
I probably need to recuse myself on this one.
No, because of certain.
Yeah.
Item 11, Secret Service of Lewisville.
Same thing for us.
Any other questions on 10 or 11? Item 12, Resolution to appoint Councilmember Jones as our primary representative to the RTC. That would be a good thing since he's now the Secretary of the RTC.
Yeah.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, I did talk with Mayor Wilcox in Highland Village, and she had talked with Flower Mound. They had no interest. And Justin, the mayor of Justin, said that he would have some interest. He hasn't gotten back to me on a phone call, but I don't have a problem putting him as the reserve representative there. Charlotte has no interest. They, we had, their previous mayor was the backup, Dan Jaworski, but now he's the longer mayor, so he can't serve in that role. Any other questions about 12? Item 13, Annual Service Plan Update, Service Assessment Plan for the Lakeside Crossing Item 14, Vote for Denko Area 911. And we had supported Jim Carter and have done that in the past. So, and he, actually, he'd come to council. I know there'd been another nominee as well that had been discussed, Highland Village. But that's where we are. So I'm good with continuing to support Jim if that's okay. Item 15, Appointments to various city boards, commissions, and committees.
Ray, did you got that?
I got the list.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
The, there's one, we got to pay, yeah, there's one. There's three, eligible names of the council if you guys could pick.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pay for place 3, 2, and 4. Who would like to serve on that? Ms. Kristin is here. I volunteer her for the place.
I'd like it. Well, I'll take. Am I already on it? Yes.
Yeah, it has to be Jones, Gilmore, Kelly, Green. So of those four, we need to pick two. Anyone?
Patrick.
Patrick? So we'll do Patrick for place 2 and Green for place 4?
Yep.
Perfect.
Can we put her on anything else?
Yeah, what else? All right. Item H, Reports. We've got a Capitol Improvements Advisory Committee sending in a report in our packets. And I think that's it for the agenda review. Any other questions before we move on to workshop item B? Workshop item B, Discussion of Unmanned Aircraft Systems and Adding Regulations Regarding UASs to the Unified Development Code.
Good evening. So we wanted to have a discussion tonight on unmanned aircraft systems here in the city of Lewisville and what we'd like to do with our ordinances with the Unified Development Code. And so I want to talk a little bit about the drone technologies, and I'll show you a little snippet of a video. We'll talk about the drones that we have to date working out of the Amazon, or excuse me, working out of a Walmart parking lot, and kind of a little bit of what the regulatory framework is, and then kind of what we've outlined as proposed areas that we could impose local regulations. And we are specifically talking about drone staging areas, so this is not going to apply to drones that are used by police or fire, by recreational hobbyists. We're talking about kind of larger drone facilities that actually require a land use component that is the staging area. So looking at the drone technologies, there's several different ones out there today. Wing is probably the one that we might be most familiar with because they are operating currently at the Walmart on Main Street. They have a temporary alternative standard to have their facilities out there in a temporary building and on screen. And so I don't know if you have seen this in operation. I've gone out there to see it a few times. But there's some other providers in the area as well. Another one is ZipLine. They operate a little bit differently. And so I'm going to go ahead and show you guys a little bit of a video of how they operate so you can kind of see how some different players do. So we're going to play a short little video here.
The aircraft is a vertical land and landing hybrid. And then we use something called a droid that enables us to silently and very, very gently place packages at 99% of homes with dinner plate level accuracy. That means we can deliver onto your front doorstep, onto table in your backyard.
So this is a droid that comes down from the zip. So if you, you know, have a largest piece of delivery tube and 50 miles away, platform 1 is going to be the right way to do that. Platform 2 is going to be the right way to make deliveries in denser settings. And then it's as simple as, you know, wrapping up the package like they would normally for any delivery, whether that's a lab medical test, a home delivery of, you know, prescription, a food delivery to someone's home, loading it into the droid through the loading portal, closing it, you know, scanning both, and then sending it off to be delivered to the customer.
We can typically guarantee, you know, highly, it's seven times faster than an instant delivery via a traditional service you might buy from today, whether you're ordering food or ordering something online. Much faster, zero emission, and it's way more reliable.
All right. And that just kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of how the ZipLine drone technology works. It's a little bit different than the Wing technology that's already in operation here in Lewisville. And then there are some other companies that are out there, too. The other one that I'm kind of most familiar with right now is FlyTrax, and they operate in a way that's very similar to Wing. They have their different landing paths. Their actual drone unit is a little bit different. Their box that attaches to the drone is a little bit different, but they all kind of have these contraptions that were on a tether kind of thing. How they land and stage is all a little bit different. I think that ZipLines was unique in that they like that building side-mounted kind of approach. So what the potential impacts are, are noise, privacy, safety. And so those are the things that you hear people talk about most when they talk about drawing drones and the negative consequences of them. But obviously, we have the Wing at Walmart. It is in its 12-month pilot period. It does have those temporary alternative standards that would expire this fall. And then ZipLine is also looking at the Walmart on Round Grove Road potentially. So that's where they would want to do more permanent improvements. But right now, the way our ordinances are set, basically, all of these types of facilities would require alternative standards. None of them would be able to be allowed because none of them would meet our screening-type requirements. The feedback that we've gotten so far on the Walmart is, I know there's been a lot of chatter online, but what we've received in terms of written complaints is one. It referenced noise and privacy, which then led to less enjoyment of the property that they had. And I was actually fairly impressed we only received one formal written complaint about drones. I do know that several people have expressed that they've liked getting the different deliveries and things like that. So we are working within a regulatory framework beyond just the local level, right? So at the federal level, that's where everything airborne is regulated. So the routes, the heights, the flight patterns, all the safety requirements for the vehicles, that's all the FAA. And so most state or local entity can regulate anything once it takes off and is in the air. The state has regulations regarding drones that go into a few different areas. They look at privacy and drone operations, but what we have control of at the local level is land use, screening, fencing, the location of outside storage, and then obviously, our building codes requiring permanent structures and that type of thing. So that's kind of where our framework is and where we fit in with that. And so what we're proposing to consider is considering this as a use that we would add to our use charts. And right now, we're looking at it as purely an accessory use, that drones would not be, or drone delivery service would not be the primary use of any given site. It would simply be accessory to some other retailer or distributor that's already there on the site. We would specify certain setback regulations from residential and other key uses that might be more sensitive or more impacted by the noise that comes with these landing facilities. And then also providing specific location and screening requirements, because there's some cases where maybe the screening requirements we have as we're entering don't really make sense for drone delivery systems, and trying to tailor those to what is actually happening with the drone or unmanned aircraft staging area. So we would propose to define these things, allow them only as accessory uses, considering them just in our general business in light industrial and heavy industrial districts. And that's where we have our large shopping centers and our large distribution centers today, and it's less likely to be adjacent to residential. Again, we would double make sure that we're not immediately adjacent to residential through some setback standards, saying that the staging area at least would have to be at least 300 foot from a residential use, a park, a hospital, any type of use like that. The nature preserve like Lila limit the area that can be used for the drone staging area to 10% of the lot or 1,000 square feet, whichever is larger, and require it to be shown on a building plan or a building permit. We need to see how this is going to look. We need it to be submitted. If there's already an engineering site plan for the site, that's fine. We don't need to redo it, but we do need a permit to show how it will work for the site. So that's kind of what we're looking at. In terms of screening, because there are so many different ways this can be done, they can be on the roof of the building, they can be on the side of the building. Currently, they're mostly operating at grade. We want to tailor those to those different locations. So addressing the screening for when it's on the roof of the building, making sure it's screened like any other rooftop equipment might be. When it's on the side of the building, that's when screening becomes really a challenge. And so maybe if it's within the same height of the building and not on a primary facade or a street-facing facade, maybe that's more acceptable. And then at grade, not requiring the landing paths themselves to be screened, but still requiring any of the ancillary storage to be screened if it's not in a permanent structure. So those are the kind of things that we wanted to talk to you about. And then after tonight, we'll work on a draft ordinance. We'll get feedback from drone companies, and then obviously, we would bring that to P&amp;Z and council for adoption at the end of the day. But I wanted to open it up for questions and discussion.
I have a quick question about privacy concerns. What exactly is the concern with privacy?
Yeah, so they, there are equipped with cameras to help them navigate. So the concern is that they're capturing images that people don't want to be captured of their homes themselves in their backyard, that kind of thing. That's not what they're doing. That's not what the intent of the cameras is to, is really just to help them land and take off. And there are state regulations that address drones taking images.
We'll say also, at least from our experience with, what's our current, that resolution on their cameras is so low that there's really not much you can see. I mean, they're really just picking up big images and shapes and things like that.
Imagine those images, that video gets expensive to store fast, even though they store just cheap, but they have no interest in just keeping that stuff. They won't even ask to.
They don't keep it.
Yeah.
Other questions? I think my biggest concern, I shared this with Claire, is I think this is great. I think this is wonderful. I think we need to be looking at what's next. We're going to have drone ports. It's going to be just like Amazon and their last mile distribution centers, because it's, you're not going to have every little restaurant with its own little spot. They're going to have a parking lot that's going to have a QR code, and the drone's going to come by, it's going to grab the Wendy's or the Chick-fil-A, and it's going to take it somewhere else. And it's all going to be hubbed out of these last mile centers that cover, you know, 10-mile radius. So I would, I would think that we would want to start, if we're talking with the drone folks already, let's start talking about, you know, where are they in two years? What do we need to do for these types of...
What do we need to do to have them deliver on the east side of the highway?
Or catch them.
So, yeah, but what are these ports?
They would even deliver on the side.
Yeah, I can't, I can't get to City Hall. Every time I come to City Hall on Tuesday, I try to get a delivery. I'm going to be the first. It's going to happen. But that drone port concept, I think is where it's headed, because it's just, it's going to be a service, right? It's going to be just like...
The DoorDash.
The DoorDash and anything like that. So there's going to be an app, and your customer orders it through FlyTrax or whatever in a way they know.
And that's how FlyTrax delivers in North Carolina. Not necessarily as a real hub, but they go to a multi-tenant shopping center, and they will work for multiple of the tenants within that shopping center to make deliveries.
So, yeah. So that would be kind of, this is a great first step. I love that we're not trying to enclose the entire facility. I think that's a little egregious. And based by the amount of drones that fly over my neighborhood, this is really an exciting tool for residents, and they are using the snot out of these little guys.
Must be nice.
They just expanded.
It's okay.
The radius. Yeah, they just expanded the radius.
You're going to want to renew something at some point.
Well, I mean, we're going to get frustrated over here first.
They still can't deliver through trees.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a tough one, too.
They could deliver to 2499 from this one, but they can't go east side of the highway.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if there's a rule over the freeway or not. Maybe that's a tech side thing. We'll have to both find out. So that's my only, where you guys are going next. This is a great, great next step, but I just, there's going to be another step behind it, and it's going to come faster than we think. So I appreciate it. If nothing else, all right, I think we are done with work session. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the workshop, and we'll move into regular session here in about five minutes. Good evening. It is 7 o'clock, and we're going to call this regular session of the Lewisville City Council to Order. We do have a quorum. First up on tonight's agenda is our invocation for Mayor Pro Tem William Meredith.
Please join me in a moment of silent contemplation.
Thank you.
Amen.
Councilman Troyer would lead us in the pledges?
Yes. Please join me in the pledges of the US Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state under God,
I have the privilege of recognizing an outstanding group of citizens tonight, and these are citizens who have stepped up and said, hey, I want to learn more about how my city operates. And I think that's important, because it's really easy to just read stuff on social media or get a brief splash of something online and suddenly form an entire whole opinion of how local government operates, what it does and what it doesn't do, and what it should do. And so I recommend and I recommend that folks get involved with their city, and this is a wonderful way to do it. And you know what? I know many of our Citizen University graduates who have come away going, man, I know a lot better, and now I know how to argue my point better, which is great, which is absolutely great, because we all are going for the same target, which is to build a better community. So thank you so much, because this is not a short-time investment. There is a lot of time put in in evenings, learning about the city. I also want to thank staff and all our experts that have come in and present on each one of the different topics that we do. Again, that's just, that's additional workload that I don't know everybody signed up for, but I sure am blessed that we have you doing it. So thank you for that. The way this is going to work, folks, tonight, is I'm going to read out your name. We're going to have you come up here. You're going to stay up here because we got to get some sort of photo. Apparently, the T-shirts are the bomb. So we're, Thomas is very excited about the T-shirts, but I want to thank the grads. We do have a couple of graduates who are not in attendance, but we also need to recognize them. Tommy Elliott, and Tommy's a band parent with me, so I'm going to go give him grief about that. And of course, Jen Wilder is not here tonight as well. But for the rest of you, and we're going to give applause and congratulations once everybody's up here, if that's okay. So first up, I've got Lisa Benavides. Just fine. It's okay. It's all good. Silence. It's okay. It's okay. We want to fill the time.
Thank you.
Don't forget your shirt. Next up, I have Joshua Channen, followed by Karen Doole, followed by Jason Doole, Alice Now we can do it. Now we can do it. All right, let's give all these folks a hand. You're standing in front of me. It's fine. Thomas, are we good? Pretend you like it.
We are ready. One, two, three, and more.
We fully intend to put all of these folks to work. All right, next up, we have the presentation of the 2024 Spirit of Louisville Award Honorees. I have our city manager Claire Powell and our Neighborhood Services Manager Ashley Farron presenting the awards this evening. Mr. Kuckey, are you leading us in?
Yes.
Awesome. There you go, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, as I throw my notes on the floor. That was the comic portion of the presentation. So this evening, we are here to recognize the Spirit of Louisville recipients for 2024. There are a lot of residents who work alongside city staff on a daily basis through volunteer programs, special events, all sorts of programs. Citizen University is one of the great opportunities. But every once in a while, we hit a volunteer or a business or a group that just goes an extra mile and exceeds all reasonable expectations. And they provide a service that frankly, we could not have provided by ourselves, and they provide lasting positive results for the community. And we created in 2019 the Spirit of Louisville Award Program for exactly that purpose, and we have two honorees that we'd like to recognize tonight. So I'm going to start by asking Alina Shehan from the grants office come forward and introduce our first honoree.
Oh, I do not need any applause. I am so excited to nominate Southern Comfort Mechanical and Steve for really helping us out in our crunch time for minor housing rehab, our HVAC program that we have worked for years to create, and we are working on finishing right now. We're so excited that Steve stepped in when we needed him. So him and his department, his whole company have donated 45, almost 50 hours of services to diagnose everything that's needed wrong with all of the people who have applied for our HVAC program, helping people who are low to moderate income in our community have HVAC repairs, replacements, or installations. So we couldn't have done it without Steve and his team, so I'm excited to nominate him, and now he gets the award.
Thanks, everybody, to the council and everybody that nominated us and given us a chance to do what we do and take care of people. Thank you.
And to present our second honoree for this evening, with city manager Claire Powell.
So we said we had two awardees on this, and actually, we have more than that, but this, this group I'm about to talk about is really just a team. So they won it all together. So I would like to have Karen Locke, Steve Southwell, Angela Lu Allen, Colleen Marchetti, Guy Harris, Patel, who I don't think is here, James McClitton, and Russ Kerbo up at the front, please. They do stick together. So we asked this team to be our Blue Ribbon Committee. So every 10 years, we do a massive planning initiative where we look at all of our infrastructure and needs for the next 10 years. And then we have to prioritize all of those within the amount that we can actually sell in debt. And this team just did just that. So I'm going to read what I wrote for them or what James wrote for me. So, city council appointed a volunteer Blue Ribbon Committee in 2022 with members that included former and current members of city boards and residents at large. They reviewed more than $1 billion in potential projects assembled by city staff and identified those projects that they felt were the most important to present to Louisville voters. The committee's recommendations, they did recommended project lists, project prioritizations, and propositions amounts, where those propositions were unanimously approved by city council with no changes. After the election was called on May 4th, city staff members are prohibited by Texas law to advocate for bond packages, which is really hard. I mean, my hands are tied, our hands are tied. And city council members are also limited in some ways. The Blue Ribbon Committee valued its recommendations enough to form a political action committee that actively encouraged voters to support all four propositions. We live in a time where many voters are automatically opposed to any potential tax increase. The Blue Ribbon Committee worked tirelessly to educate voters and the proposed projects that would be funded by the bonds. Their work included a dedicated website, social media conversations, presentations to local civic groups, and promotional signs along major highways, or roadways. On May 4th, all four propositions passed by comfortable margins, two with support near 80% and the other two with support near 70%. Such large margins are uncommon for local bond elections, especially in current political climate, and represent both the public's positive vision for Louisville and the Blue Ribbons Committee's work to share and activate that vision. With the approved bond funds, Louisville residents can look forward to major road public safe, major road changes, public safety, parks, and animal shelter projects that will build on the high quality of life enjoyed by Louisville residents today. For that reason, I wanted to recognize all of these great leaders in our community, and I can tell you, we couldn't do it without them. This was tireless work. They are selfless individuals. I know each one of them on an individual personal level, and I am so grateful for all of you.
Of course, I'd be the one to come up and speak. We'd like to thank council for the award. Thank you. We'd like to specifically thank Dave and Leanne and Ashley, who provided us innumerable bits and pieces of financial knowledge that we needed to pass this bond. We'd like to thank the voters, and we'd like to thank everybody on the committee, because we did good work.
Have to admit, this is one of my favorites, to have so many residents that get recognized that are putting back into their city. I just think it's awesome. And we need tons more of it. All right. Next up, item three, council canines, featuring council member Bob Troyer.
Good afternoon. I'm Bob Troyer, city council place one. And today we have with us Rillo. Hey, Rillo, come here. Rillo is an Australian cattle dog, terrier, pit bull mix, and he's very gentle, and he needs a home. He's been in the shelter here for quite some time, and he's very, as you can see, he's very chill. He's about seven years old, and just is a nice, gentle boy, and would like to have a home. So come on out and give Rillo a forever home.
You didn't take Rillo home?
I just made sure my wife wasn't there.
That's fair. We have lots of, lots of great critters over at the shelter. Folks, I would absolutely, there is no reason to go spend $250 on, on a pet from a puppy mill. So many of those puppies end up in our shelters. And so if you would just go find somebody who needs some love, maybe it's a senior dog that's a little more mellow, maybe it's a brand new puppy, you can find any and all of them at the shelter, and they're always vetted and taken care of. So come on out and help us so that we can, we can get these guys homes. All right. Next up, D1, public hearing. Public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending Article 7 uses, parking requirements, supplemental use regulations, and certain distance regulations of Volume 2 of the Louisville City Code, known as the Unified Development Code, by amending Chapter 7.3, supplemental use regulations, Sections 7.3.23, medical office and clinic, hospital, and licensed massage therapy, to clarify the language related to the circumstances triggering the requirement for a special use permit. In November 2023, the city council approved changes to the Unified Development Code that required a special use permit for medical office and clinic, hospital, and licensed massage therapy uses if certain violations of the Texas Penal Code had occurred. Since the effective date of that ordinance, staff has enforced the provisions of the ordinance on several establishments that had multiple prostitution-related offenses. During the enforcement process, staff identified the need to clarify certain terms in the ordinances proposed by these amendments. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval of five to nothing on June 4th, 2024, and is recommended that the city council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, available for questions, as well as Brooke Rollins, our police chief. We do have an open public hearing now. Are there any public comments? I do have an E comment from Mr. Mark Reader. Having been sexually solicited in one of these places, which I did not seek, I support any and all attempts to put these establishments out of business so that legitimate massage therapy establishments don't get a bad reputation courtesy of the others. He is voicing his support of this change. Counsel, if there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending Article 7 uses, parking requirements, supplemental use regulations, and certain distance regulations of Volume 2 of the Louisville City Code, known as the Unified Development Code, by amending Chapter 7.3, supplemental use regulations, Section 7.3.23, medical office and clinic, hospital, and licensed massage therapy, to clarify the language related to the circumstances triggering the requirement for a special use permit, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Public hearing, item two, consideration of an ordinance amending Article 2, definitions, Article 7 uses, parking requirements, supplemental use regulations, and certain distance requirements, and Article 8, Chapter 1, off-street parking standards, of Volume 2 of the Louisville City Code, known as the Unified Development Code, by adding smoking establishment as defined use, specifying the requirement for a special use permit and for the smoking establishment use in certain zoning districts, and adding the required parking ratio. The proposed code amendment adds a new use, smoking establishments, and requires a special use permit for this use in the Old Town Mixed Use 2, Mixed Use, General Business, General Business 2, and Light Industrial Zoning Districts. Cigar bars, cigar lounges, hookah bars, hookah lounges, and cigarette lounges have been growing in popularity and are not clearly defined or addressed in the Unified Development Code. Furthermore, there are significant health risks, along with odors and fumes associated with smoking, that could be detrimental to other tenants or properties. Other uses with onsite consumption of age-controlled substances, namely bars, are regulated by the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission and require SUP approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, five to nothing, on June 4th, 2024, and it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. I have Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, available for questions, and we now have an open public hearing. Counsel, any questions or comments? I have none from our E comments. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Well, five to nothing. Sorry. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending Article 2 definitions, Article 7 uses, parking requirements, supplemental use regulations, and certain distance requirements, and Article 8, Chapter 1, off-street parking standards, of Volume 2 of the Louisville City Code, known as the Unified Development Code, by adding smoking establishment as a defined use, specifying the requirement for a special use permit for the smoking establishment use in certain zoning districts, and adding the required parking ratio, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Public hearing number three, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for a bar and food truck park and associated alternative standards regarding parking on approximately 0.648 acres legally described as Salvation Army addition, Lot 1 and 2, Block A, located at 206 West Main Street and 207 Elm Street, zoned Old Town Mixed Use 2, as requested by John Williams of Old Town Craft on behalf of the city of Louisville, the property owner, case number 24-04-5-SUP. At this time, I'm going to recuse myself and hand that over to our deputy mayor Pro Tem, or mayor Pro Tem, sorry. I'm adding more titles.
Okay, Old Town Craft is a proposed bar and food truck park looking to operate out of the former Salvation Army located on the west side of Charles Street between West Main Street and Elm Street. A special use permit is required to allow both a bar and a food truck park within the Old Town Mixed Use 2 zoning district. John Williams, the applicant, and his partners have experienced operating many similar businesses in Denton and Dallas, such as East Side, Miss Angeline's, and the adjacent food truck park. The applicant is also requesting an alternative standard to waive the parking requirement in conjunction with this SUP. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval of five to zero of the SUP requests and alternate standard on May 21st, 2024. The recommendation is, is that the city council approve the ordinance and associated alternative standards as set forth in the caption. The public hearing is now open. Do we have any comments?
No, sir, there are no comments. Oh, actually, there is a E comment. I apologize for that.
We have an E comment from Courtney Duinga-Dara. I am a Louisville resident, voter, and property owner. My family is so excited about, about this new attraction in Old Town, and we would like to express our enthusiastic support for this special use permit.
All right, counsel, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Second.
All those in favor? Voting, motion passes five to zero. Do we have a motion for approval?
Move to approve. Second.
Counsel, please vote. Oh, sorry.
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a bar and food truck park on approximately 0.64 acres legally described as Lots 1 and 2, Block A, of the Salvation Army addition, located at 206 West Main Street and 207 Elm Street, and zoned Old Town Mixed Use 2, OTMU-2 district, providing for repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date, declaring an emergency.
Counsel, please vote. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, sir. Item E, visitors' citizens forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping a feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. All right, I do have two public requests. The first is from Yolanda Carpenter.
Evening. My name is Yolanda Carpenter, Mrs. Yolanda Carpenter, and I live
My name is Yolanda Carpenter, Mrs. Yolanda Carpenter, and I live at 1305 Wentworth Drive here in Lewisville. And I just like to address the esteemed City Council members and Mayor, City Manager, and last but not least, Jennifer Malone. She's wonderful, okay? So, thank you for taking the time to listen concerning the inadequacy of the current minivan used by the seniors on trips and which finally arrived this January. You have in your possession a write-up by Mrs. Barbara Araby, a respected senior at Thrive, who has very clearly delineated this. This minivan is neither workable or comfortable. It sits only 10 people, and Ms. Catherine Die, whose title should be Director of Activities and everything else concerning us because she does everything for us, has to make two trips to the same place because of this. I ride shotgun, but riding shotgun is for someone who is agile, and thanks be to God, I can do it. As you know, we no longer have our own building, and pre-pandemic, when we were moved to the Vista Ridge Mall, we still had a sense of belonging and could call the rented space our own. Currently, we still cannot use the kitchen, even though we were promised we would. During that time, our bus disappeared, our driver disappeared, and we were left with a dilapidated van which could only hold 10 people and perhaps one or two more. We were all super skinny. We needed a step stool to get on it, and this kept many of the seniors who had to use canes or wheelchairs from going on trips. I am humbly requesting that you please return our bus to us, which is somewhere in the city garage since it's been seen blocking traffic during one of the city's celebrations. We will need to hire a driver with a CDL license. We must have both. One cannot happen without the other. This driver must be one who enjoys driving seniors because we are very special and require a lot of TLC and patience. In fact, it would be granted one or two of the seniors, like Ms. Barbara Araby or someone else, were allowed to sit in on the hiring process. The town of Flowermount has not one, but two buses, and of course, their own building. Thank you again for listening. Any questions, or is that for later? I still have two minutes and 29... ooh, 28. Does anybody want to make any comments? Anything? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter, I was just going to tell you that the council can't actually talk about something unless it's on an agenda first, so we'll reach out to you. I'll have Stacy reach out to you afterwards, okay?
I heard part of it.
By state law, we cannot respond to you?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay.
So, this is no affront to you, and not that we are not listening?
No, no, no. It's okay. I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
It's my first time here, so I just...
Understood.
It just came out.
No, that's okay.
Excuse me.
We'll have staff reach out to you.
Okay. Thank you.
You got it. All right. Mr. Mark Reader?
Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Mark Reader. I live at 1197 Valley Oaks Drive here in Lewisville. I wanted to thank the council for action a few months ago when you declared that burned-out house at 1115 Seneca Place a public nuisance, and it is gone except for one thing. On the east side of the property, there is a pole with exposed wiring that was not removed when the house and the slab and everything was taken out. So, I'm just a little concerned. I don't know... I'm sure not going to try to touch to see if the wires are live or not, but I was just asking, checking, and just letting you know that there may still be an issue there. It was the... I don't know why they didn't take it out when they took down everything else on the property, but it is still there, and I'm a little bit concerned that if the wires are live, that it could be an issue. Thank you very much for hearing me, and go M.A.S.
Thank you, sir. We will have somebody from staff reach out. In fact, I think he's following you to your seat. That's what I love about our city. We get it handled. I do have one other public comment, an email that came in. "My thoughts after writing what Thrive calls the bus from Ms. Barbara Araby. First of all, it isn't large enough to be labeled a bus. It is the size of a small van, opening the side door very large and impressive with safety handle that is magnificent. However, upon attempting to enter the large impressive side door, it appears to me that the first step and the second step, although very wide enough or definitely not deep enough for me to place my foot perpendicular as a normal first step. I wear a size 7 shoe and had to position my foot sideways on both the first step and the second step. Then I could place my two feet together while holding on to the seat back to go straight ahead if I wanted to enter the bench seat, the first of three rows, which seats three people. My next option was to shuffle slightly left and then right into a section of two seats on the driver's side with an option to take a seat on the passenger side. If necessary, I could have attempted to walk towards the back of the bus via the aisle, approximately 12 to 15 inches wide, to sit on either side, two seats on the driver's side and one seat on the passenger side. Upon exiting the bus, one of our seniors took hold of the magnificent handle with two hands, but then apparently could not see where to place his feet to be able to step out without a lot of assistance. He and his wife's comment was never again. I only felt safe in choosing to alight myself with the bench seat facing head-on to the windows on the driver's side, hold on to it, and backed out slowly. As far as the lift that was installed as an attempt to be able to try and identify as ADA compliant, it made me feel as though the person who might need to use it would then feel as though they were in a jail. Seniors deserve a better and larger room accommodation to ride." Is that all of our public comments for this evening? Thank you, sir. Item F, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council member or citizen so request. For citizens to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the City Secretary. We need to pull Items 10 and 11, so I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda with the omission of Items 10 and 11.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the Items 10 and 11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion's approved, and Consent Agenda is approved except for those two items. Councilmember Meredith?
I need to recuse myself from Items 10 and 11.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve Items 10 and then Item 11. I have a motion by...
Move to approve.
All right. Now, we're going to do them one at a time. I think Liz will have us do it that way.
Move to approve.
Is that okay, or can we do them both?
Let's just do them what is.
Yeah. Okay. I've got a motion from Councilmember Troyer.
Move to approve Item 10.
Second, sir. And a second. Counsel, please vote. Item 10 is approved. I'll entertain a motion regarding Item 11.
Move to approve Item 11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on Item 11. Counsel, please vote. Ronnie, I think we're waiting for yours.
Oh. Here I am reading notes.
Yeah, motion passes. Thank you, Counsel. Councilmember Meredith, yours isn't a two-step process, sir. Item G, Regular Hearing 13: Consideration of an Ordinance of the City of Louisville Approving the 2024-25 Annual Service Plan Update to the Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for Public Improvements for the Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District Providing a repealer, severability, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency. On March 20th, 2023, the city created the Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District for construction of public improvements in a designated area that contains approximately 25.546 acres located along McGee Lane, north of Justin Road and west of Interstate Highway 35 East. An update to the Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role must be considered and approved by City Council annually. This plan identifies public improvement costs to be provided by the PID, along with the manner of assessing the property in the PID and the assessment role. It is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City of Louisville approving the 2024-2025 Annual Service Plan Update to the Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for Public Improvements for the Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District Providing a repealer, severability, and an effective date, declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes. Item 14: Consideration of Resolution of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas Providing for the City of Louisville's Vote for One Member to the Board of Managers of the Denton County Area 911 Emergency Communication District and Providing an Effective Date. At the May 6th, 2024 City Council Meeting, the City Council selected Jim Carter, former mayor of the Towne Trophy Club and former president of the Denton County ESD #1, as the City of Louisville's nomination for the Board of Managers of the Denton County Area 911 District. All the nominations have now been submitted from the area cities, and the district has requested that each participating city vote for one of the candidates and advise the district of its selection prior to 5:00 PM on July 31st, 2024. The bios and resumes of each nominee have been attached for the City Council's review. It's recommended that the City Council approve the resolution and vote for one member of the Board of Managers of the Denton County Area 911 Emergency Communications District as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to appoint or cast our vote for our nominee, Jim Carter, to the committee?
To Denton 911?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you, sir.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And approve.
And approve the resolution.
Second.
Got it. I got a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes. Item 15: Consideration of Appointments to Various City Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Various Terms of Office on the City's Boards, Commissions, and Committees are expiring on June 30th, 2024. Council Subcommittee will provide their slate of nominees for appointment to the various boards, commissions, and committees. City Council will engage in discussion to consideration appointment to the various boards, commissions, and committees. It's recommended that the City Council proceed with the appointments to various city boards, commissions, and committees as set forth in the caption above, and I just want to take just a quick second. Now that we've got a council of six, plus the mayor, the mayor has kind of been removed from this process. I oversee what's going on and keep an eye on it, but council does the heavy lifting, and I greatly appreciate all the work that you guys put in. I know it's difficult. When I look at the slate of folks that have filed, it's always a challenge to figure out who's going to go where, and what strings do they have for the table, and there's just so many great residents that have stepped up, frankly, we just don't have enough committees right now to put everybody on a committee at this time. There was a time when that was not the case in this city, and it wasn't that long ago, where, you know, we had to stack boards with the same person in two or three different boards or committees, and it just... It wasn't great. I mean, they're wonderful people, but they get spread thin, and quite frankly, we need more people involved, not less. So, I am so glad to see that this has turned around and that we have a great pool of candidates to pick from, but I want to expressly thank council and staff for arranging and making sure this all runs smoothly and that we get great candidates for these committees. With that, I'll entertain a motion for any conversation.
I move to appoint the following members to a two-year term. Animal Services Advisory Committee: Reappoint Denise Crafton for Place 2. Reappoint Amanda Earl to Place 4. Reappoint Deanna Perkins to Place 6. For the Arts Advisory Board: Reappoint Kristy Gomez for Place 2. Appoint Heidi Barr for Place 4. Reappoint Jennifer Lindy for Place 6. Reappoint Michael Gorts for Place 8. CDBG Advisory Committee: Reappoint Akber Alana for Place 2. Appoint Michelle Epps for Place 3. Reappoint Breann Jackson for Place 4. Appoint Ron Key Abbey for Place 6. Fire and Crime Control: Reappoint Christian Green. Reappoint for Place 1. Reappoint TJ Gilmore for Place 4. Reappoint Brandon Jones for Place 5. Reappoint William Meredith for Place 6. Reappoint Patrick Kelly for Place 7. For the Library Board: Reappoint Kay Stevenson for Place 2. Appoint Tracy McNeil for Place 4. Reappoint Abigail Crafton for Place 6. Old Town Design Review Committee: Appoint Jane Kosick for Place 2. Reappoint Randy Telslav for Place 4. Park Board: Reappoint Elizabeth Flores. Appoint Kyle Burch for Place... Elizabeth Flores for Place 2. Appoint Kyle Burch for Place 4. Reappoint Blake Nguyen for Place 6. Reappoint Jim Dahmer for Place 8. Planning and Zoning: Appoint Josh Peterson for Place 1. Appoint Ainsley Stelling for Place 3. Reappoint Karen Locke to Place 5. And reappoint Francesca Awali to Place 7. Louisville Public Facility Corporation: Reappoint William Meredith to Place 2. Zoning Board of Adjustment: Reappoint Audrey Smolinski to Place 2. Appoint Ron Key Abbey to Place 2 as the alternate. Reappoint John Deal to Place 4. And P&amp;Z Commission will recommend Francesca Awali, don't make a recommendation, for Place 5 for the Zoning Board of Adjustment. That concludes the motion.
Oh, I think we're missing a... Oh, we're missing a page?
The back page.
What page are we missing here?
Oh, I didn't have that.
Yeah, that one's not on the packet there, I think.
Okay. So, for tax increment reinvestment zone number 1, we're going to nominate Councilman Kelly for Place 2. And for Place 4, we'll nominate Councilwoman Christian Green. For tax increment reinvestment zone number 2, we're going to reappoint Bob Troyer to Place 2 and reappoint Patrick Kelly to Place 4. For tax increment reinvestment zone number 3, reappoint Bob Troyer to Place 1. Reappoint Christian Green to Place 3. Reappoint William Meredith to Place 5. For tax increment reinvestment zone number 4, reappoint Brandon Jones to Place 5 and reappoint Christian Green to Place 6. Now, that concludes the motion.
There we go.
Now, I second.
Patrick, you sure you still want to second this?
I still want to second this. Followed right to the whole.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? If there are none, Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to all those who have been appointed and reappointed. We are very excited for your continued service, or new service to the city, whatever the case may be. Item H, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. We do have in our packets, and folks, you get these packets online as well, so these... Some of these information reports are placed in our packets just because by law they need to be, and they're good information to have for the council. This happens to be our Capital Improvements Advisory Committee's semi-annual report for the period of October 1 through 23 to March 31st of '24. So, if you want to find out a little bit more about some of our capital improvements projects, there's a great resource there. Next up would be City Council and Staff Reports. Councilmember Jones, would you mind if we started with you?
Not at all. I just want to congratulate our Citizen University graduates. It's a great program for the city to educate folks about what's happening and our Spirit of Louisville recipients. And finally, I just want to thank the council for reappointing me to RTC. I've been appointed as the secretary, so we're working very hard to work on regional transportation solutions for not just Louisville, but the North Texas area. So, thank you.
Councilmember Key?
Yes, I just want to say thanks to the Louisville Police Department. A great job. We've had some high-profile terrible tragedies that have happened in the city, and they've been on top of it and took care of business very quickly. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Meredith?
So, we've got some library activities for the week. Just a reminder that the library will be closed Wednesday, June 19th for Juneteenth. Adult Anime plus Makers 18+ for adults Thursday, June 20th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM. The Hive Maker Space, no registration required. Waffle or Awful for teens age 13 to 18, Thursday, June 20th, 6:30 to 7:30 at the Glenmore Savage Community Room. Registration is required. And Choo Choo All Aboard for children age 3 to 6 with a caregiver Friday, June 21st, 10:00 to 11:00 AM Bennett Program Room. A ticket is required. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate you, Mayor, for being elected to the Board of Directors of the North Central Texas Council of Governments this past week. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And I also have a number of activities going on at the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, Black Box Songwriter Series, Carrie Rodriguez, presented by the City of Louisville on June 23rd. Oliver, presented by Outcry Theater, June 27th to the 30th. Oliver, presented by Outcry Theater, June 27th to the 30th. There will be two shows on both June 29th and June 30th. And as always, the Acoustic Great Jam Sessions every Friday night, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. And then we have the Acoustic Fridays Songwriter Challenge, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, June 21st. That's a challenge where songwriters are given a challenge to write a song that must include one specific word, and I don't know what the word is for this challenge, but it's always an interesting experience. Yoga in the Plaza, presented by Blue Anju Studio on Wednesdays. Bodyweight Boot Camp, presented by Case Cortez on Thursdays. Tai Chi in the Plaza, presented by Lowell Johnson on Saturdays. And Pilates in the Plaza, presented by Audrey Green Red Deer on Saturdays. And then there are two exhibitions going on. First of all, Movements, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, June 1st through July 6th. And Let the Tablecloth Speak, Jazz Martis solo show, presented by the city of Lewisville, and that is June 8th through July 6th. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, just wanted to thank all the citizens that participated in our runoff election this past Saturday, and also wanted to take the opportunity to give a huge shout out to Denton County as well as Dallas County. With all the storms that came through, we did have a... After we posted notice of the election, we did have a polling location that did have some damage, and they quickly worked together and found us another location. In fact, did a joint location within Denton County out at Castle Hills Elementary, so wanted to give them a big shout out. That kept the engine moving forward, and, you know, we had about 1,600 of our citizens and residents participate in the election, so a big shout out to them to keep that going.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lukey?
No report, Mayor.
Ms. Evans?
Mayor, City Council Park fans, if you'll remember, a few months ago, you kind of approved a design for updating the landscaping around City Hall and the Visitor Information Center to become more native palette to reflect a lot of what's going on in Wayne Ferguson Plaza, and so we've awarded a bid to American Landscape Systems, and they've been issued a notice to proceed, and they'll be working on mobilizing on Wednesday. And Phase One will include demolition, hardscaping, irrigation, and bed preparation, and that will take place in sections around City Hall, starting on Wednesday and going all the way through September 12th. And we'll try to keep it in front of... In each section, and then complete that area and move to a next section. Planting will not take place until October, just to ensure that all the plant material can survive. And what we'll be doing is as we get those beds prepped, we'll be putting some mulch down in there so it'll look presentable, and then we'll move in and do the plantings in October.
I do just have the lake report, so it is the mean water level's at 529.63, which is about two and a half feet below the crest.
Yep. Good times. Jim? Chief? Councilmember?
Just a few things here, Mayor. So, first off, very excited to be celebrating Juneteenth and 19th. So, this is, I think, our first year celebrating that with the official day off for the staff. Fantastic. Along the same lines, I've never been to a poetry slam before, so my first one will be on the 7:00 PM, June 19th at Thrive, so I should see what that's going to be like. And then also, I don't want to miss the Pride Month Dance, Thursday, June 27th, 6:00 to 9:00 PM, at Thrive as well. That's everything, Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you. A couple of quick things. Number one, we had the grand opening of Glory Park, and it was glorious. It is quite the facility, and I want to thank all of staff, all the residents, everybody that it took to lift that space up out of the ground. For those of you who go, why would you put a park there? You put a park there because those neighborhoods deserve a park, and it was a great location. So, if you've got a question or you're like, what is this thing? Head on down to Kia Drive and park your car and go walk the space. It's amazing. And if you need to see, there's some cool little Easter eggs floating around in there as well. But please, take some time, go see an amazing new green space for citizens of Lewisville. And number two, I know I mentioned it last week, and I'm seeing it on social media already, brush pickup is going to take time. I need you all to have some patience and grace, and when I say takes time, it might be a month. It might be a little more than a month because we have multiple cities, and there's only so many of these brush grabber trucks that we have. What would be super helpful is, number one, make sure that your material is up at the curb. Number two, make sure you or your pesky neighbor is not parked in front of it. That grabber's not going to reach that over your car and pull the stuff across the top of your car. It's just not going to happen. Number three, don't put fresh stuff out there after the folks have gone through the neighborhood and then go, well, they missed my neighborhood. Stop. You know, you got to go back to the regular pickups, setup. So, please, patience, grace. It will take time. It'll take more time than you want it to, and that's okay because these guys are working really hard, and they'll get it done. So, I'm begging everybody in Lewisville, just have some patience. It's going to be a little grungy for a little while until we get this all done. With that, I don't believe we have any executive session. So, with that, since there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we are adjourned. 7:53.